Good evening. Welcome to the Town of Emmitsburg's town meeting for the evening of, I'm gonna pause. Sorry, you're laughing, I feel like I have to do. Sorry, it's all good. We'll start over. We're okay now. Welcome to the town meeting for the evening of Monday, October 6th. At this time, I please remind you in the audience, if you have a cellphone, if you want to mute it with all notifications and rings so that we can make sure that everyone can attend and hear accordingly. And with that, I invite you to stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Future meetings include the green team meeting on October 9th at 3:00 PM here in the town office and on Zoom. Citizens Advisory Committee on October 14th here in the town office at 7:00 PM. Board of Appeals meeting, October 15th at 7:00 PM here in the town office and on Zoom. We have a tentative planning commission meeting. We're thinking, right now is scheduled for the 27th, but that's may change. It may be moved to the 28th depending on conflict, so please stay tuned. And that would have been at 7 o'clock here in the town office and on Zoom, no matter what date that happens. And then our next Board of Commissioners meeting will be on November 3rd at 7:00 PM here in the town office and on Zoom. Are there any other meetings that I might have forgotten at this time? We're good. All right, moving on. I trust you've had a chance to look over the meeting minutes. We have two sets to approve tonight. Is there a motion to approve the meeting minutes from August 18th, 2025? So move. Thank you. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Thank you. I think by hair went to Commissioner Hagan. Any further discussion? No. All right, I just want to thank town staff for the changes that you made. This is very thorough and I appreciate you taking the time to go back and add that. I know it was a lot of work and it's very clear. Thank you so much for doing that. All right, so all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any against? All right. Motion passes five to zero. Next, we're looking at the meeting minutes for September 8th. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Same move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any against? Okay, motion carries five to zero. Then we're moving on to the police report.
Good evening, I am Deputy Bartholomew. I have the monthly report for September. We welcome back DFC Honaker this month, so that's good news. Staff, staff and like I said, two of us on a half day of holiday annual special assignment Deputy Honaker handled a pilgrimage for the Seton Center or Seton Village. New fleet issues. We handled 140 calls for service, two total arrests, 28 traffic stops. And that concludes that. If anybody have any questions on the more detailed statistics?
Any other questions, comments? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the town managers' reports. Turning it over to Ms. Willetts.
All right, good evening. This is a town manager's report for August. Just a few noteworthy items in August. Staff worked with a contractor repair a water leak at the pool related to wastewater. We had no spills of untreated sewage. We did not exceed the plant's design capacity any days in August. We roughly had 21.38% of the wastewater treated in August was wild water. At the time of this report, we had a surplus of 6.48 inches of precipitation over the last six months. Rainbow Lake is currently at the spillway level of 16.6. Related to water, the amount of backwash in the month of August, should say, was 13.63%. And then trash will remain, trash pickup will remain Mondays during the month of October. And then I just listed some of the meetings that I attended and then on page 15, I just listed out some noteworthy items.
Anybody has any questions? Any questions, comments? Nope. Okay, thank you. We are moving on. Grant administrative reports.
She's not here, so I'll just take any questions anybody might have on the grant administrator report.
Questions?
I just wanted to know if the DePaul Street was complete in terms of the sewer lateral cleanouts?
Yes.
Perfect.
That's it?
I have just one question with upcoming grants due November 10th. Looks like we are applying for another $15,000 grant for the community garden. We're tentative on that. Waiting on some final direction.
Okay.
Commissioner, we're gonna have to go ahead and apply for that because of the deadline. And I'm not sure that we're gonna have a definitive answer on where we want to go. But we don't want to miss out on the grant. If we do get the grant and we don't need it, then we just won't accept it. But we're gonna go ahead and do all the procedures to put that in place.
Do you have to like itemize what money will be?
No, it's just for the expansion. We can say for an expansion, addition and expansion of the garden. Then if we don't do that, then we'll just decline the grant.
Understood. Thank you. I know that council had talked about workshopping where to go with the garden so that but I understand that's probably coming up in the next few weeks. All right, any other questions? Nope. Okay, moving on. Town Operations Specialist Report.
She's not here either, so if there's any questions, I'll do my best answer.
Any questions? Nope. Okay. And the town planners' report is next.
Good evening. This is the town planner's report. I've listed out the zoning opinion and the zoning permits that were issued during the month of September. Under development updates, I would like to highlight that Emmett Ridge, we received their improvement plans and that's currently under review. The planning commission will review this on October 27th. And we have reviewed the encroachment, our right-of-way encroachment permit application for low fiber and that's almost done. And under miscellaneous, the green team is meeting and Board of Appeals is meeting this month. We're continuing to administer the grants, the community legacy grants. And I've listed out the meetings that I attended during the month of September.
Okay, thank you. Questions?
I just have one. Has Federal Stone paid tax fees? And if so, was it an FY25 or 26?
Would have been 25. And yes, they've been fully paid.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Just one quick comment. I had three residents recently approached me that have gotten permits for projects. And I just want to commend Julia on her customer service and they want you to go teach Frederick County how to issue permits, please. So thank you for what you're doing and it's being noticed out there. So thanks.
I just have a quick question about glow fiber with the updated plans of the right-of-way encroachment. Do you what with that application, does he actually outline where the digging is going to be or the phases in which that will happen or is that still in the future?
Yeah, the phases are in the plans that they submitted. And that's been reviewed by RKNK.
I'm sorry, say that again.
And that's been reviewed by RKNK and everything's good.
Oh, understood. All right. Only suggestion I'll make since I won't be here is, this is happening right now in my parents' community in Frederick. And it wasn't handled necessarily the right way by trying to get the word out that it was gonna happen. So it caused a lot of confusion with the residents like. So when that time comes, just if the town can maybe blast on that messaging app or something that the project's getting ready to start. So nobody is taken by surprise. I mean, somebody still will, but we can, we can hope for the best. All right, any other questions? Nope. Okay. We are moving on to planners' report. Commissioner comments. All right, we'll start with Commissioner Hagan.
As I said, we filmed last month, finished up our last farmer's market of the year. It was pretty well attended. Had some excitement. One of the tents blew away with everything in it, trying to catch it down. But a lot of people, the vendors have promised to come back next year as we try to keep it ramping up. So it was a good season for it.
Thank you. Commissioner Turnquist?
Yeah, I just have a few remarks. As we all know, tonight is Commissioner Bowman-Pallett's last evening with us.
For now.
So I want to recognize her exceptional service to the town. Commissioner Bowman-Pallett has been a thoughtful, steady and engaged voice on this board. She consistently brought balanced ideas to the table, encouraged open and respectful dialogue, and always kept the best interests of our residents at heart. Her ability to listen, collaborate and represent the community with integrity has left a lasting mark. I want to personally thank you for your dedication, your leadership and the positive example you've set for civic service. And to end, keep your campaign signs handy because you never know what the future holds.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Turnquist. It's been a pleasure working with all of you and you've and the commissioners who have since rotated out. It has been truly a pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner's meeting.
We have Halloween coming up at the end of the month, on the 31st. It'll be at least from 5 to 8 will be children and activities and parade going on in the park. I mean, in the main street, West Main Street and North and South Seton Avenue. So and trick-or-treating will be going on at the same time and then with them them hours. So be careful on the 31st, Halloween is gonna be here before you know it. And thanks to the town for all the help we got with the, we had a big tournament in town this, this weekend and the fields were beautiful. Then everyone from all the other towns and cities through Maryland, Virginia and Pennsylvania loved our parks, both sides. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Hoover.
Yes, I want to echo Commissioner Turnquist's comments. Madam President, this will be your last night here at the dais anyway, at the town council meetings, and I appreciate the time that you've had here on the council and the work that you have provided and the service. And I know you've always worked very hard and you've done it in the best interest of the town. And then what you thought was the very best for the town and all the time. I think you've done a great job. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That means a lot. Thank you. Now it's my turn. And I have to read this, I'm sorry. So it's truly been a pleasure to serve on the town council these past three years. In late, late August, I realized that I would need to prioritize responsibilities both at work and home. And as such, I've decided last minute that I couldn't commit to another term, at least for this year. But my new signs that my brother designed are still sitting in my garage and I took a page from Mayor Davis and I made them generic enough so that they would work for any year. Hopefully I get to use them again when, when things slow down. I am grateful for the opportunity to have served you to serve as commissioner and the first female president of Emmitsburg Town Council. The role allowed me to meet so many wonderful people and thank you for that. And for those of you who've reached out to me with questions, concerns or ideas, thank you for trusting me to represent you. I will continue those connections long after my term concludes. And from the beginning, I grounded my work in a guiding set of values. And at the heart of everything was the responsibility of representing the constituents. I sought to create a safe space where feedback, questions and ideas could be shared openly. Whether residents have been here for generations or have made the conscious decision to move here recently and call it their forever home, it was clear to me that both groups wanted to see our town thrive. I valued and welcomed multiple perspectives, believing that collaboration and dialogue make our town stronger, even if we disagree. While some topics seem polarizing, it's because both a positive and a negative truth can exist at the same time. And it's my belief that the role of the town council is to work towards that middle ground that works for and protects people on both sides of an issue. And because of that value, yes, sometimes meetings ran a little bit longer than anticipated. When I began my term, I made a commitment to always consider what's best for the town, encourage participation from community members, respond quickly and thoughtfully to concerns, problems solved together and follow up as necessary, promote transparency and consistency in our code ordinances and legislative process, foster fiscal responsibility and transparency, uphold ethical standards, educate myself on issues before meetings to ensure meaningful, informed discussion, ask clarifying questions when needed and refrain from voting on agenda items if more information is required. For me, being a commissioner was more than attending one or two meetings a month. Our community elects us to serve as representatives of the people, to provide a system of checks and balances, to make decisions through collaborative and transparent governance. That requires time, energy, dedication, and it's not a responsibility that I took lightly. I believe this council, our members, like our community, should be able to feel free to ask questions, receive answers and engage in open civil discourse without fear that their ideas or viewpoints would be taken as a personal attack. In a small town like ours, where the number of engaged volunteers is limited, it's vital that we equitably represent voices of all community members, committees and commissioners. And by doing this, we build a community of trust, civic engagement and long-term stability. We will flourish when community members in the town both feel valued, when they, they grow when collaboration, shared investment and respect guide decision-making. And I encourage any community member who shares similar values, become involved or run for council. With your support, we'll continue to grow. So it's my hope that the town will continue to strive towards these goals. And thank you for allowing me the privilege of serving you with integrity. With that, I turn it over to Mayor Davis for mayor comments.
All right, we're gonna, gonna go a little different than I would plan doing because of all the wonderful things that were said about you and since you all took all my comments, thank you for that. But with that, thank you. I especially for serving as the board president for my two years that I was mayor, knowing that if something would happen that I wasn't able to finish or had to be a way that the town would be in great shape. And that was always good to know. And yes, we did have some disagreements, but we spent some Saturday afternoons in the back room and we worked them out. And we came to, to good agreements and I think we had, we had a great three years. So for that, thank you so much and
Thank you.
Black here. It says, Commissioner Bowman-Pallett, the town of Emmitsburg, sincerely thanks you for your three years of dedicated service and commitment as a member of the Board of Commissioners 2022 to 2025. So thank you so, so much. I don't look as old with my glasses. Some stuff in here too. So we don't.
Oh, the stuffing.
Yeah, you gotta have stuff.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much. It was a pleasure to work with this board and I think we had a lot of meaningful discussions and I thank you for that.
All right, a lot of good news tonight. DePaul Street ribbon cutting this Saturday at 9:30. Well, not between 9:30 and 10:00. 9:30 we'll have coffee and donuts. And it's a tradition that the newly elected commissioners buy the coffee and donuts, so you guys can take care of that. That's all I better let you know that now. Seriously, we got that all taken care of. So anybody that can join us back there, it'd be great. I really want to do it to thank the residents back there. They put up with a lot for 18 months. And but it's an end product. You got the cleanest water lines in Emmitsburg. Yeah, you got the cleanest sewer cleanouts, you know, everything. You got it all. So that's great. So Saturday at 9:30. October 27th here in this building, the state of the county address will be given by the county executive, which we're just really excited about that she chose Emmitsburg last year. It was in Middletown. And she's had filming crews up here for a couple of days, taking pictures of the town and doing all kinds of neat stuff. So if you can't make it here, it's at 6 o'clock on the 27th. If you can't make it here, you can watch it on the Freddie County Channel, which is 19, I think, 18 or 19. One's the Board of Education, one's the county. So it'll be televised live. Sunday is a ribbon cutting for Federal Stone, which is just a a great addition to the town. It's, they're gonna employ probably close to 100 people and the facility out there is just beautiful. It's, so I'm hoping somebody can attend whoever the new president of the board might be. That would be great if they could. And I don't know if you'll be asked to speak or not. Don't know a whole lot. I'm gonna be in Western Maryland at MML meetings. So I won't be able to make that. So no, I will not be at the Ravens game. Everybody thinks I'm going to the Ravens game. I had to give my tickets away, so. And the last bit of good news, if things go good, on November 3rd, the town will take ownership of the lot at 113 South Seton Avenue, the future home of a new additional parking and a little park for the downtown area of Emmitsburg. So we're hoping for November 3rd and that's gonna be a great addition. So I want to thank the council for being proactive with that and, and helping us get to the finish line with that one. And that's all I got.
All right, thank you. Moving on next to public comment, we have Patricia Shepherd. When you come up for public comment for the two who have signed up, you will have how many minutes? Four minutes to speak. Just microphone is on, so you're good. Just state your name and whether you live inside or outside town limits, we don't need to know your address and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Patricia Shepherd. I live inside the town limits of Emmitsburg. And I am here tonight to make a statement about the importance of people serving on advisory committees for the town. These are volunteer positions meant to provide advice to the mayor, town commissioners and staff. The purpose of advisors is to ask questions, debate ideas, make suggestions or recommendations and review proposals. These committees are set up to provide input on issues, concerns and ideas facing the town. The purpose of having citizens from various walks of life and different philosophies as part of these committees is to get different perspectives and ideas. The purpose of advisory committees is not to rubber stamp ideas and proposals, but to debate ideas and make decisions after careful consideration, to make recommendations to the town council that will best serve the entire town and its interests. Some of the best solutions come from active debate, but the parties must be willing to listen to each other. They must be open to new or different ideas and they must find a way to work together. Everyone is working to make this town a better place. And just because we have different ideas or visions for the town does not mean we are against each other. Because my view or opinion is different than yours, it does not make me a troublemaker or a bad person. It does not mean I am wrong and you are correct. Some people have lived their whole lives in this town and some have moved here recently. But they moved to Emmitsburg for a reason. They want to live in this wonderful town. Each person is entitled to voice their opinion on issues and each one deserves to have their voice heard. Everyone thinks their own ideas are great and it takes a lot of strength to admit you were wrong. Or that your, or that other ideas might be just as good or better than your own. If we truly want to make this town the best it can be, then we need to find the strength to embrace those who are different than us, to listen to each other and to recognize that those who disagree with us are still good people. When we do not get our way, we should never resort to name-calling, spreading misinformation, labeling of people or disrespecting people on social media or in the newsprint. All that does is further divide people. It is this disrespect and the lack of response by some elected officials that result in good people resigning from advisory committees or not wanting to serve at all. Community means helping each other out, no matter which side of the political spectrum they are on. It means assisting those who need a helping hand, not because they can do something for you, not because they agree with you, not because you judge them better than someone else, and not because it will bring you publicity. We do it because it is the right thing to do. Community means helping everyone. When we lift up those who are in need of our assistance, then we all do better and we succeed as a community. We are never going to like every decision that is made. I do not agree with all the decisions you've made as town commissioners, but I listen to your opinions. I value your input and I respect you and I am grateful for your service to this town. Until we learn to embrace our differences and to work together, we will not succeed, which means our town will not succeed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I know you and your husband have been active in the community for years. I do want to thank you for all that you've done. Up next, we have Eric Sloan. You just have to turn that microphone right back on again. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Eric Sloan. I live in town, have been here since 96. For the folks on the board and the new person that's coming, I hope you're not here to win friends and influence people because you're in the wrong position, because you're gonna be required to make decisions that are gonna get you thrown out of the local family and neighborhood barbecues, so on and so forth. Because people aren't gonna like the decisions that have to be made if you want this town to survive. Because if it doesn't survive, there's, take a look through history of towns that are now just scrap heaps on the pile of life. Certain things have to be done. Certain things don't need to be done. Take care of what needs to be done versus what feels good to be done. I'm not gonna get into the separations now, but if you want to contact me after the meeting, I live in town. There's just certain things for this town need to survive. One is infrastructure. Another problem, and it's been brought up and it's something that the town needs to get with the state, is the traffic control on the eastern side of Main Street down by where I live. People come down that hill and it's everything from somebody in a minivan with the family in the back to tractor trailers. And they allow themselves as they're coming down that hill to gain speed. And sometimes they come by my house at 50 miles an hour. Myself, I'm not worried about getting killed because I don't spend that much time in front of my house. But the town allowed the Dollar General to go under years ago and the state's responsible too, without any real concept of what's going on. And it is just hilarious to watch a tractor trailer lock, it breaks up when the driver's got a cellphone in his hand and he's skidding to a stop, getting up against the curb because he's sliding past a minivan that's turning into the Dollar General. One of these days, it's not gonna work. You're gonna have a fatal collision out there and everybody can look at each other and go, well, it's somebody else's fault. No. It's the board's fault and the state's fault because something's gotta be done. And if you want to go ask Montgomery County how they got away with putting up traffic signs and speed control, feel free. Somehow they, they did it and they got by the state requirements on it. God knows how they did it. It's Montgomery County. They do what they want to do. And they get away with it. Other than that, with traffic, it would be nice if we could have fire police or somebody come Halloween to sit at Harrington's at the intersection of Creamery and, and State Route 140 as a visible deterrent for people to slow down and also make it safer for the kids to cross the street and go back up after they do their trick-or-treating coming down Main Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sloan. Okay, moving on to administrative business. Okay, moving on to administrative business. Do I turn this over to you, Mr. Mayor?
Um, yes, I guess it is. And before I go into that, which is your family here, thank you so much for sharing her with us for for three years. I know I've sent her home in a bad mood. I apologize for that. I I deep down apologize for that, you know, and but she she was just invaluable to us and so thank you both very, very much. Okay, with that, in today's society and with the hustle and bustle of the world, we tend to forget to say thank you. Tonight, I want to start a new trend in Emmitsburg by thanking someone that contributes to our town in such a quiet manner. In nineteen forty eight, Harry Black opened a road helped open a roadside market on Route fifteen north of Thurmont, or I would like to say south of Emmitsburg. But this market continued to grow over the years as Robert Bobby Black worked side by side with his father, growing the market into Cattockton Mountain Orchard. Over the years, Bob and his sister Pat expanded to become a nationally renowned business, receiving awards that included apple grower of the year and most recently being inducted into the International Fruit Tree Association Hall of Fame. With the growth and expansion of the business, one thing that never changed was the sense of community. While being located in Thurmont, the orchard has adopted Emmitsburg as its second home for many years and has supplied fruits and ciders for many events in our community to include the turkey trot, the monthly community meals, the Thanksgiving meals, seat and center events, elementary and high school events, and they are a strong supporter of the Vigilant Hoos Company. And with that, I would like Mr. Black to please come forward and while he's coming forward. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. And the one thing you'll find is he never comes to an event without apples. So it's a and I'll be selling these out in the parking lot after the after things are over with at a good price. But with that, also, I'd like your family to stand up and you can introduce them for us, please, because they're all part. They're all part of the market.
Yep, and my granddaughter Kylie and her friend. He's a keeper.
He's a keeper, okay.
Anyway, so whatever, you know, they make me look good.
And and the great part about it, the mark the orchard is going into a fourth generation. So that is just just fabulous. It's unheard of nowadays, so.
Caitlin, who's not here, I forgot to let her know. It's just been a really busy, very busy weekend, just a busy day.
I can't imagine.
She's got two, my two great grandsons, so that will be the fifth generation. And Grayson was on the wagon with me on Sunday. I relieved one of the drivers to eat and he wanted to be on the wagon with me, so I think my dad's looking down and I hope he likes what we're doing.
And you'll probably be closed this week and there's nothing going on in Thurmont. Nothing going on in Thurmont this weekend, so you can close up. But with that, I want to present you with this plaque. So this plaque is proudly presented to Robert Black of Cattockton Mountain Orchard in recognition of your outstanding contribution to the town of Emmitsburg and your unwavering support of the community. Your kindness and generous donations have made a meaningful and lasting impact. The town of Emmitsburg also congratulates you on your well-earned induction into the International Fruit Tree Association Hall of Fame with gratitude and appreciation. So thank you so, so, so much.
Also, Mr. Mayor, the Lions Club would also like to thank him too, because he they donate apples for our Halloween party that we have at the fair hall every year, too.
Or I can sell you some.
Frank, and really, I'm just Bob Black.
Did everybody?
No, you're good. No, you're good.
Well, thank you again. You only have to ask. I'm so glad to be working with Deb at the Seat Center. And that was just what I I've been up always using the turkey trot. I always liked coming up for that. And then he said, oh, yeah, I gotta I gotta get down there. We're serving meals. I said, why do you serve meals? So we got involved with that and she done several things and you only have to ask. We're just there to, I mean, well, life ram is Emmitsburg, so that's that's why we're, you know, there's no border. I just had to help you out. Thank you all.
Thank you so much.
We can. If he likes, he ties his glasses off.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and congratulations to the Black family. Thank you for everything that you do and provide us with delicious fruit. It's nice to have you right down the road for all our delicious treats. So with that, we are moving on to for consideration. Wait a minute. Yeah, for consideration proclamation declaring October twenty twenty five Breast Cancer Awareness Month. So proclamation Breast Cancer Awareness Month, October twenty twenty five. Whereas while considerable progress has been made in the fight against breast cancer per the American Cancer Society, about three hundred sixteen thousand nine hundred and fifty new cases of invasive breast cancer will be diagnosed in women in twenty twenty five. And whereas this year, an estimated forty two thousand one hundred and seventy women will die from breast cancer in the United States. And whereas one in eight women will develop breast cancer in her lifetime. And whereas there are over four million breast cancer survivors in the United States. And whereas during this month, we reaffirm our commitment to support breast cancer research and to educate all citizens about its risk factors, detection and treatment. And whereas as we display pink ribbons and wear pink clothing to raise raise awareness, we also support those who courageously who courageously fight breast cancer and honor the lives lost to the disease. And whereas this October twenty twenty five, we recognize breast cancer survivors, those battling the the disease, their family and friends who are a tireless source of love and encouragement and applaud the efforts of our medical professionals and researchers working to find a cure. And whereas a breast breast cancer awareness month is an opportunity to unite all citizens in our community to prevent breast cancer deaths through increased education and regular screening. Now therefore be proclaimed that the mayor and the board of commissioners of town of Emmitsburg, Maryland here do hereby proclaim the month of October twenty twenty five as a breast cancer awareness month. So because we're just, there's no need for discussion. All in. Is there a motion to accept the proclamation?
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any against? A motion carries five to zero.
May I interrupt? I'm sorry, but we are going to also do something this year. We've never done it. My mom had breast cancer.
I'm going to have you come to the microphone, so people at home can hear you, too. It sounds like good news. Well, only if you're at home. Yep.
There we go. Sorry, Frank, I should have made that. But anyway, thank you for bringing that up. But we are going, we've already started. We have a square system so we can keep track. But every two pack and every six pack of cider donuts, we're going to make a contribution on the amount of those. And we kind of looked a little bit, it'll be in the thousands because we do, people like our cider donuts. But that's what we're going to do this year to help that out. And I guess it's for you guys, it's for everybody here. I mean, I guess we're going to be tied in with Thurmont, but maybe I can, we can try to tie it in with you guys, too, so. But I think it's very important. So I didn't mean to interrupt your meeting, but that is a very important thing. But I just wanted to let you know that. Thank you.
Thank you. From there, we are going to move on to the treasurer's report. Commissioner Turnquist, yes, the cash activity as of September twenty fourth, twenty twenty five. We have a cash balance of seven million, three hundred and fifty six thousand, one hundred and twenty two dollars. Deposits totaling three hundred and nineteen thousand, three hundred and ninety five dollars. Withdrawed five hundred and thirty one thousand, one hundred and thirty five dollars for a new operating balance forward of seven million, one hundred and forty four thousand, three hundred and eighty two dollars. The top ten checks are at the bottom of the page and the fund breakdown as of September twenty fourth. In our general fund, we have one point eight million. Capital projects is eight hundred and seventy four thousand. Storm water management, twenty three thousand. Water, one hundred and ninety six thousand. ARPA, six hundred and forty four thousand. Sewer, three point four million for a total of seven million and change. I just had one question about the checks for fourteen thousand, nine hundred. It says Federal Stone Water Meter reimbursed.
Right, so they're required to purchase their water meter and the invoice comes to the town and so that the town pays the invoice and then Federal Stone reimburses us for it.
Okay. That's all. Any other questions? Okay. There is no planning commission reports, so we can move on to agenda item number one, swearing in of new commissioners. And with that, I thank you and I turn it over to our newest member, who I wish I wish you luck.
I think we'll do you both at the same time, if that's okay.
That's fine.
Okay. Well, first of all, I'd like to thank you both for for running for election to the town council. Look forward to to working with you. And we have a lot of stuff going on, so it's going to be a busy, busy three years, so. With that, if you would raise your right hand and use your name where I use mine, how about that? I Frank Davis. Do affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States. And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland and support the constitution and laws thereof and that I will be to the best of my skill and judgment. And that I will will to the best of my skill and judgment diligently and faithfully without without partiality or prejudice. Execute the office of commissioner for the town of Emmitsburg, Maryland. According to the constitution and laws of this state and the charter and code of the town of Emmitsburg, Maryland. You're both duly sworn in to commissioners for the town of Emmitsburg. Yeah, thank you. And now that I've done all my official stuff, I'm going to go into my breast cancer shirt.
Before we can start, I just wanted to thank all the employees of the town. You've made my transition so easy. You provided me with the information I've requested quickly, promptly, and I can't be happier. You guys did an excellent job and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, in the absence of Madam President, so I will take over the next agenda item. So for the next next agenda item, we have for the consideration of reorganization reorganizing of this board of commissioners, so we need to re-adopt or reappoint members for the treasurer, vice president and president of the board.
I'd like to go ahead and nominate Jim Hoover for a position of president.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any abstaining? I have it for president, so then we need a vice president. Do we have a motion for a vice president or suggestion?
I'll step in as vice president.
I'm sorry.
I said I'll step in as vice president.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion for a vice president? Or a second? No motion at all for a vice president recommendation?
I can make a motion for Mr. Ben Benji. I know when I came to the board, we switched positions and newcomers took on important positions and I thought it was a great opportunity.
Your motion, is there a second? Seconds of the motion? Can I make a second?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a second. All right. Is there any additional discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any abstain? All right, United's vote for vice president and treasurer to board.
I'd like to choose the board again, please.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Sweeney, Commissioner Sweeney, to be treasurer.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion, we have a second for treasurer, Commissioner Sweeney, any any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any abstain? Or I'm sorry, any of any any no's? All right, all in favor? Okay. Now we got to do committees. All right, so we have P Z, Parks and CAC.
Do we have or will we have a liaison to the green team?
It's not currently defined, it's not defined by Sustainable Maryland, you need one, but I don't see a reason why a commissioner could not participate in that committee. I think it's a great idea.
You have a recommendation?
Um, for, no, honestly, I don't. I would like to be the liaison for the CAC.
Do we have a motion for? For Commissioner Turnquist? All right, so we have a motion and second for Commissioner Turnquist to be on the CAC. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so moved. Parks Committee, any request, any any recommendations?
I'll nominate Mr. Sweeney.
Motion, we have a second. Turnquist, second. Any additional discussion on motion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Sweeney, and at least planning and zoning. Yes, I'll go back to planning and judgment, since I was the chairman there before, people want. Motion for? All right, is there a motion? Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
We have a motion and second for any discussion on? any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, I take care of all my committees?
Yes, you're good.
All right.
If somebody is interested in the green team, just, it's Sabrina and Nogelia. It is a daytime meeting. But they're done by Zoom as well as in person. So if somebody's interested, just let us know.
Thanks for that now or later, please let staff know. All right, moving on to our next agenda item. Consideration approval of construction bid for the North Seaton Avenue Waterline Replacement and Green Street project. This consideration, so do we have a motion for agenda item number three?
I'll make the motion.
All right, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Can you, for agenda item number three, is this the bid?
Yes.
Okay.
We have a motion, do we have a second on the bid to approve it?
Second.
Motion, we have a second to accept the bid?
Commissioner Hoover, I, I need it stated that Huntsberry is being awarded the bid in the amount of $4,729,543. That's on page 31. Thank you.
Hold me up. Page 31, how much?
$4,729.
Huntsberry, okay. All right, so is our motion for Huntsberry, is it a motion for $4,729,543? I'll make the most first motion and I have a second.
One second.
Any discussion on the?
Yeah, I, I have a question. So it looks like with our available funds for the project will be 2 million short if the pending awards are not made. I know we have more than that that's pending. Do we know when we'll get a decision for those pending awards? Or if they're not made, do we have a backup plan to cover the 2 million?
I actually just received an email from MDE today that we scored high enough on their funding request that we will receive the $2,573,450.
It's amazing.
So that brings us to $4,650,030. So.
Fantastic.
And we should know about the other grant in, let me tell you, next week, I think it's next week. So we're looking good.
So your fund, so your funding is secured.
And if, if we get both of those, then we do not need to utilize our two CDs from Woodsboro.
Perfect, thank you.
Kathy, what are the amounts of the CDs that are sitting in there?
$563,826.50, both of them.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed? All right, agenda item number four. The consideration adoption resolution 2025 to one R declaring the official intent of the town of Emmitsburg Waterline Replacement and Green Street project prior to the issuance of the debt. What do I need here?
Just need to approve the resolution. This is an MDE requirement for their funding.
We have a motion for resolution number 25-01R, resolution declaring the official intent of the town of Emmitsburg for reimbursement expenditures expenditures to be incurred with respect to certain projects or programs or from certain funds with the proceeds of debt. I'll send a move. Second?
Seconded.
Motion of a second, any additional discussion, questions? All those in favor? Any opposed? Number five. For consideration ordinance 2025-03, amend in title eight establishing a rental registration program. Of course, we've talked about this a time or two. So do we have a motion to the consideration ordinance 2025-03? Accept or amend or?
I send a condition.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Seconded.
You got a motion, we got a second. Any additional discussion?
Yeah, I do, I have some
All right.
Discussion items. I'm not sure that everybody is aware of exactly what the ordinance is or what it means. So I wanted to give a little explanation. So the proposed ordinance would establish a mandatory registration and inspection program for all residential rental units within the town of Emmitsburg. So if you own a rental property, you have to apply for a permit and a town employee will come out and inspect the property. If it's not up to code or fails the code, you'll get, be given a certain period of time to, to bring it in compliance. If adopted, it would require every rental unit to be registered. I said that it mandate compliance with the Frederick County Building and Minimum Livability Codes. It would require a local agent for landlords living more than 60 miles away. It would establish inspection and reinspection fees. It would impose gradual fines up to 3,000 and allow, allow permits to be revoked for repeated violations. So there are benefits. It would improve tenant safety by ensuring all rental housing meets basic livability and safety standards. It would provide accountability for absentee landlords. Data and transparency by creating an official inventory of all rental housing in town. And consistent standards aligns local inspections with Frederick County Building and Livability Codes. I do have some current concerns that I want to share. The possible economic impact on landlords and tenants. Compliance and inspection fees may lead to higher rents or fewer available units. It could reduce affordable housing for Alice households, seniors and low income workers. It will create, I believe, an administrative burden for town staff by increasing the workload for inspections, record keeping and enforcement. I believe there are privacy and property rights. Inspections of occupied, occupied homes may raise privacy or due process concerns. Equity and scope, it applies only to rental properties, not to unsafe or substandard owner occupied homes. And I think the most important thing for me is zoning conflicts. In most residential neighborhoods, Pembroke, Brookfield, Northgate, Silo Hill, Emmett Gardens, et cetera. You may only rent to families or family units, not unrelated individuals. In simpler terms, if your, if your rental property is outside of Main Street or Seaton Avenue, you cannot rent individual rooms. I think this is going to affect a lot of students in town who will be put out in those areas. I believe we could accomplish the same goal by having maintenance standards for all properties, not just rentals. At its core, it feels like government overreach placing the town between property owners and their tenants in a way that can be viewed as unnecessary and intrusive. Thank you.
Any additional questions, comments, discussion?
I, I do have one thing. Obviously, I'm here to answer questions, but having not received any. As I was going through this final time in preparation for this afternoon or this evening, looking at the definition of rental unit, and this is on, I'm looking at the red line version, so I'm on page 37 of your agenda packets. The current definition as written is a dwelling unit or a room within a dwelling unit leased or rented for habitation by a non-family member. I think it would be more clear to add of the owner to that definition. I was, I was reading through this today and I, I got tripped up on that definition several times. I think that it is acceptable as written. But I, I do think it would add a little bit of clarity. Just a suggestion, you can take it or leave it, but.
Or any additional comments?
No, I mean, I'm, I'm happy, again, I can answer any questions. Staff, I know, tried to address the feedback that was given at the last meeting. I guess the only other thing I will say is that the last meeting I did express some concern about the resident agent, the 60 mile radius piece. I did some additional research, I found some out of state authority that would seem to support that it is in fact constitutional. I didn't find anything in state or within circuit to the contrary. So I'm, from a legal perspective, I'm comfortable with that remaining in if that's what the board wants to do. Other than that, again, I can answer any questions, but.
Commissioner Sweeney, you made the motion, so as, as, as the town attorney has just recommended on page 37, rental unit added at the end of that sentence, at the end of that definition of the owner. So if a non-family member of the owner, are you acceptable with adding that to the, to your motion?
Yes.
Commissioner Hagan, you okay with the second?
Second, I'm good with it.
All right, so then, so the motion's amended for that and then, okay. Any additional comments, discussions of the, of the ordinance? Have no additional comments, questions? Do we have a motion, I'm sorry, do we have, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Abstain.
All right, so it's 311. Moving on to agenda item number six. Consideration resolution 2025-06R establishing rental registration fees. Again, do we have a motion? Resolution 2025-06R. Motion to accept resolution, do I have a second? Second?
Second.
All right, so we have a motion, we have a second to accept resolution as written. Do we have any questions, comments?
I have one correction.
Oh yeah.
On the resolution 1234, the fifth paragraph where it says, whereas the following fee schedule shall apply, the next line should be chapter 8.02. That's all.
All right. You okay with that?
Yes, I'm fine, thank you.
You made that second, you're all right. All right, any additional comments, questions, discussion on the motion? All those in favor? All right.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Nay.
We have 4, 4, 41, yes, 41. That concludes the agenda items for so the next item we have is the set agenda items for the next meeting, November 3rd, 2023.
Yes, thank you. Next agenda for November 3rd town meeting, I have several items. The first item for administrative business will be an update on the Creamery Road Pump Station, a final change order for time extension. I have five consent agenda items. Number one will be for consideration, accept the resignation of Diane Walbrecker on the Board of Appeals. Number two, for consideration, accept the resignation of Patricia Galloway on the Planning Commission. Number three, for consideration, appoint Jack Pollitt as a full member of the Board of Appeals with the term of October 1st, 2025 through October 1st of 2028. Number four, for consideration, appoint Silas as a full member of the Planning Commission with a term expiring March 3rd, 2029. Number five, for consideration approval of proclamation for Municipal Governments Works Month, November 2025. And then for agenda items, number one, for consideration recommendations related to the Lincoln Avenue Traffic Calming Study. Number two, for consideration approval of expanding the community garden. Number three. That is wrong. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I gotta look it back up, I wrote it down wrong. All right. Numbers, number three will be for consideration approval of ordinance to authorize up to 900,000 in tax exempt bonds to be issued pursuant to MDE's Maryland Water Infrastructure Financing Administration and in connection with the North Seaton Avenue Waterline Replacement Project. Number four, for consideration approval of resolution 25-09R approving the request to release bond number CIC 1933275 for the Federal Stone Industries project. Number five, for consideration approval of proposal related to the groundwater appropriations permit project to expand plant capacity at the water treatment plant. And number six, for discussion, ordinance 2025-15 which establishes a vacant property tax and registration program in the town of Emmitsburg. I left that as discussion, I don't know if you want me to put for discussion in consideration. This will be only the second time hearing this. Both, okay, so I'll do for discussion in consideration approval of ordinance 2025-15.
I think we're only due discussion, but we'll say.
Okay.
Can you repeat the second agenda item, please? For consideration approval of expanding, for expanding the community garden. We had talked about having a workshop in the month of October to come up with guidelines. And I know at this point there are two proposals for the expansion.
So what I was planning there was to have a workshop, I think leave that agenda item there, so because the workshop would be discussion only. So we have this, then we can follow up if we, if it becomes a decision to vote on something, we can do that at the town meeting right away.
Have the workshop before or after?
Before.
Oh, have the workshop before?
Workshop in October is what we planned on doing. That's what we talked about last meeting. And then we'd have this agenda item, so if we wanted to make a motion and a vote, we'd be able to implement whatever, possibly whatever we discuss or resolve at the October meeting.
Okay, because I know there are two proposals floating around.
And if we don't get, you know, if we don't get to the discussion, don't get it, does it not get us anywhere in October, then this?
No, that's fine, but I'm just pointing out that there are two proposals floating around for an expansion.
Right, at least.
Okay, so we need to pick a date.
We'll get to that, let's do this one first, please.
Oh, no, wait, wait, this is for November.
Correct.
We were going to have a workshop in October, I thought you just said you wanted to have the workshop first.
What I'm saying is leave this agenda item on here.
I agree.
Okay.
Okay, so we need to approve the agenda.
Correct.
And then we can schedule the workshop.
Anything, anything else?
That's all I have.
Does anybody else have any request for, for, for November agendas? Okay, do we have a motion to accept the sixth agenda items that we just saw? Any additional discussion on the agenda? All those in favor? Now let me jump. So, so we did talk about it our last meeting, I have a workshop. And so what, what dates is everybody available for a workshop? For, for community garden? community garden discussion only?
Mondays and Tuesdays are good for me. Monday or Tuesday.
Am I good with the 20th?
What day of the week is it?
Monday.
I think so.
I'm fine.
I'm good with it.
Am I good? All they got somebody to do video, I think, I think we're good. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I'm good. Do you want to start any earlier than seven or start at 6:30? Doesn't get over so late?
Um, is there, is there?
That's fine with me if we start earlier.
Cliff, can you, Commissioner Sweeney, can you do 6:30?
Yeah.
Mr. Hagan, can you use 6:30?
I can do 6:30.
I can do any time.
Yeah, I know. Yes, you all right, 6:30? First of all, all right, so let's get to the workshop. We, we okay to do that?
Uh, I'm not sure. I, I think, I think something somewhere says seven o'clock. I'm not sure if that would apply to workshops off the top of my head, but I do know that there's somewhere in the code that sets the time, because we've, we've done this before.
All right, so we, we would do a workshop at 6:30 unless we get told that that's, that's not a valid time, and then therefore to be able to seven o'clock. But at this point, potentially scheduled for 6:30, one to 20th.
And we can discuss it more later, but I know the town council had received suggested or sample guidelines from other communities, so I'll pull that back up and perhaps we can start with that.
Okay.
So we don't have to start from scratch.
Okay. All right, if there's anything, anybody wants to bring it to meeting or attend to meet and bring it with you, so we have it to discuss and open, and try and resolve it. We're trying to do, hopefully not more than about a 90 minute meeting and kind of get it, get our arms wrapped around it. Go from there. All right, so we have a motion to do a workshop on the 20th, or maybe a motion or not, but at 6:30 and possibility is change it to seven. We need a motion?
I'll send.
All right, good enough. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Or moved? All right. Sign approved text amendments into resolutions, do we have any?
Yes, we do have some that will need signed.
All right. I'll sign those, and I guess, I guess it's me signing them.
Yes, yes, you are.
Hallelujah.
Mr. President, I, I have an announcement, one, one announcement, I forgot to
Your time's up.
Um, the neighborhood, I guess it's called a neighborhood meal.
Yes.
Is Wednesday, this Wednesday, the BFW is doing it at the Hamlets of the Fair Company Activities Building.
What time?
Uh, I think it's 5:30. Yes.
5:30.
5:30 to seven, I think. Uh, the BFW is doing, I think, the lasagna and salad.
This might be there.
And with that, I just want to give a, a shout out to all the organizations that have really taken off and, and supported the, the community meal. Last month, it was Mount St. Mary's lacrosse team. There was 40 young men there, and I think what got my attention the most out of that is not only were they serving the meal, but the ones that weren't serving the meal were sitting at the tables with the I want to call customers, I guess, with our customers, and they were sharing conversation and they were talking about themselves and, and I even think some of them have helped offered to help some of our older residents with some projects and things like that. It was very, it was very heartwarming to, to see that happen, so I just want to thank all the organizations that have stepped forward, and we already have all the months for next year already committed, so it's, it's a, it's a great program, so thank you, everybody.
Mayor Davis, are we posting the meal on Facebook? Because I keep, I think I'm missing it, if we are.
Yeah, I think it's everywhere, isn't it?
It is, and I don't always get that wire, so a lot of
Okay.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Second, oh. You could have it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Everybody grab some apples on the way out, okay? I got